Man of many talents.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the South Kingston Town Council. It is Monday, October 26th. The time is 7:30. And first order of business is the pledge of the flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to repolish the wishes of this one nation under God in visible clarity and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Healy.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Excellent. Item four on our agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I make a motion that we approve item number four A and B, work session and regular session as presented.
Second it.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Item five on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second it.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously as well. That brings us to item seven B, communications. And this is a communication dated October 13th, 2015, from Tracy A. Nelson, Richmond Town Clerk, inviting South Kingston to join the Richmond Town Council in forming an ad hoc Gardner Road Improvement Study Committee. It's been received and placed on file. What are we going to do with it? And maybe before we get to that, Steve, could you explain this a little bit?
Yeah, what I would recommend to you, they were asking to have that committee set up. The committee would have representation from public safety community with the police department EMS, as well as fire department, to solicit their opinions. They've also asked, in addition to those three appointments, for two additional appointments, Public Works, and two residents from that area. My suggestion would be to request Chief Espia to handle this on behalf of the council, and also to ask Vin Murray to provide correspondence to the property owners on the street in South Kingston to ask if they wish to be represented with that committee. And go from there.
Any questions on this item?
I'll make a motion to receive communication item seven B, place it on file, and refer it to our police chief.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Seven D is a communication dated October 20th, 2015, from Janice M. Prochaska, submitting her resignation from the Recreation Commission. It's been received and placed on file. And what are we going to do with it?
We discussed this in the work session, and my recommendation, based on our conversation, would be that we direct or ask Dale to send a letter of thank you for her service and her participation, and move forward from there in terms of looking for an alternative. But she's been a fantastic asset. She served many years, and I'm sure, Steve, you have also something to say about her years of service.
No, what I was going to suggest is that if you wish, there's a proclamation that's been developed. What I would recommend is the council asks the clerk to send an invitation to Janice for the next council meeting, and possibly she would come in to receive it in person.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And that brings us very quickly to item eight on our agenda, which is comments from interested citizens. Yep, this is your opportunity to come up to the podium, just state your name and the address you live at, and tell us what we should be doing better.
Yes, my name is Diana Giuliano, and I had spoke to, it was Terry Martin from Parks and Recreation, concerned about how they were going to make the beach handicap accessible. Because when I went down there, I thought, this will never work. I mean, buildings over here, the beach is over here, handicap parking is over there, and there's no way to get up there. No handicap person could have been involved with that. And she said, well, you know, they were just beginnings, and maybe next year there'd be money for some things. Well, I wound up going to Narragansett Beach, because they give you $20 pass if you're disabled for the season. They had those Modi mats, mats which you roll out, so people can walk onto the beach. I heard people that were not handicapped saying they would like to have it to take those big carts they have to wheel down. Cape Cod, that's what they have, Modi mats. I can't imagine that they cost that much money, number one. For me to have to not be able to go to my town beach, I was really saddened by it. You know, the lifeguards, they're nonexistent. I almost died on the beach because my heart rate went to 15. If the setup was the way it is now, I would probably be dead. You don't see the lifeguards like you used to. They were such an integral part, because they were visible. So Terry also said for mobility, you can, you know, get those big bicycle things, those wheelchairs or whatever they are. I don't have anybody to push me. And I happened to be down there, someone took me down, and there was this girl, probably about 14 years old, crutches on her arms and her legs. And somebody said to her mother, why don't you get one of those things to wheel her? There's only one, and somebody has it. And I was sad for myself. I said, look at this, this girl, yeah, she has the energy to do it, but this really should not be. It's a town beach, one person has this one, and one person has it. It's terrible. Now, someone told me, there's a ramp now, which is put in after the season, so I haven't seen it. But I can't get to that ramp, because I use a walker most of the time, and that won't wheel on the beach. I had said, couldn't you put a handicap sticker, like the second row, which is by some steps that you can get up in a small ramp? Well, we'll look into that. So I drove by, not only was nothing done, but it was tied off, so you couldn't even take the shortcut through. I went around, oh, anyway, just, I really think it was very poorly done. I shouldn't have to go to another town, and because of their goodwill, I could use it. So I don't think the Modi mat is that expensive. I mean, it really does make a difference if you're handicapped. The other thing is that I suggested maybe one of those, not a regular Porter sand, but they have those ones that are like self-cleaning. Get one that's closer. I mean, for me to look, then I might as well just go home. That's how far it is. I, you know, I just can get picked up and go home. So, I mean, I think that's another suggestion. They have them down at the Breachway, they have it down at Beaver Tail. Trust me, I found every spot I could just about go to that I could manage to at least be by the water. I can't even walk to the water. So, I mean, I've been trying this for a couple of years, so I really could tell you about a lot of the beaches. The other thing is that someone told me, I was at a meeting for disabilities, I think you were there then, oh, if you're handicapped, you can get entrance to the state beach for free. Well, I mean, it's all the way in North Kingston. You have to go in person, and they just want about everything, you know, your savings account, all your social security information. First of all, it was like it was a secret. I would try to go to the one, the Breachway. Like, there's nobody, you got to pay, there's nothing, there's no, there's no senior discounts for anything. I mean, that's another thing. But, I mean, if they could make this possible at each beach, I realize that every little township is different. There's no unifying fact, and I think that's a big, that's a big problem. Because each area can find out the best of what works for them, and how it could be uniform in the different, except this one has that, we don't have this one, this one does that. It's very disoriented when, you know, you're trying to limit your, having to struggle to get some of these things. So that was, that was my main concern. Everybody was very nice. I mean, she was very nice on the phone with me. I didn't feel like she was going, yeah, 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 yeah. But the fact is that I couldn't go to the beach, you know. The other thing, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place, but I have trouble in the front of my property. I must be in the low part of the street. One year, you could just about take a canoe to get out in the summertime. I needed to leave boots out in front of the house before I got sick. I got sick last year, and my friend came down. She was afraid to go through, because it was from one side of the street in front of my house to the other, filled with water. The town came down, well, it's a low spot, we don't have this. I understand that. But if cars aren't supposed to drive through, when they don't know the depth of it, I can't even get to my mailbox. And what it did this year particularly, it eroded the gravel, so that the top layer was gone. And my friend happened to call. When I came, when I was up here in the spring, I went to them, I said, listen, I had pictures. I said, now it's even more eroded. Oh, well, that was because of the snow. I said, no, this was before the snow. I have to say, they came down the next day, he said, it'll be done, and it was done. But the fact is that that's going to happen again, because it's constant water. I don't see how it can be fixed, and I am, I am the one where it floods from one side of the street to the other, and then it goes up into the property. If it's allowed to rain, of course, it's not absorbed. So that's been a longstanding problem. I, you know, I stopped kind of following up until my friend said, how you doing this here? I mean, like, you can't even get out to get your mail. Anyway, so that's it, that's one story, okay? So if there's anything that could be done, and maybe put into a budget that allows for them to get a mat, or little things like that, because you really have to see it through the eye of the person that has the handicap. What you think is not that bad, is that bad. And you really don't know. I had the problem with my father. I would go beforehand to check the inclines. Oh, Daddy, it's not bad, till I was, I had to do it. And it really is, but everybody does the best they can, but they really should have some consultant or somebody that has some kind of physical disability to add. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I just have a question. The mats you were referring to, they're called Modi mats?
Modi mats, I think it's M-O-D-I, M-A-T, right.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Bill Rosen, Kingston. I've been coming now to these town council meetings for about a year, and I, as I said a while ago, I've been observing things. And one of the things I've noticed is that the issues mainly that you deal with are community-based issues, that have nothing to do with the political parties which some of you represent. And so I know that you're going to be having a work session of some sort, associated with the elections for town council and school committee in the near future. I hope that I can be there. But one of the things I would like to see considered at that town council meeting is whether the elections that we have in the town of South Kingston should be nonpartisan, like they are more or less in Narragansett. Although I don't know anything about the voting arrangements in Narragansett, I understand that they are nonpartisan. I'm not here advocating that we should get rid of the political parties, although some people might like that to happen as such. I think they do serve a useful purpose in some situations. But within the town of South Kingston, I don't see that the political parties are really necessary to be here and represented on the town council and the school committee when the issues associated with those meetings and the committees that serve those councils are really nonpartisan, 99.9% of the time, at least from what I've observed. Now, what goes on behind the scenes, I have no privy associated with that as such. So I understand from hearing what you were talking about, that there's going to be a work session coming up, as I understand it, November 30th. And I would like to see, if possible, to get that type of thing on the agenda.
That would certainly be on the agenda of that meeting, and we'll keep you informed. Thank you for coming so regularly to our meetings and paying attention.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with a comment out there? Any comments from our council members?
I was going to say, this weekend, I had the Wakefield Village Association did their annual Halloween stroll down Main Street, and had their festival down at Sagatucket Park, and they had about 300 kids there. It was a great turnout, just a wonderful event. And I think kudos to the Wakefield Village Association for having this kind of community enrichment programs. I think those are the kind of organizations that we like to support and see them do things like that. Everything was free, they had games, they were giving out lots of stuff, it was great. I set up a table and did candy apples with the kids, just as a way to, you know, give back and do something fun. And I'd love if anybody on the council next year wants to do it with me, because I could use some help. I had 300 kids, I almost didn't have enough apples. So, I'd love to see you guys come next year and set something up, and we can just spend some time with the community. But that's all I got.
I was also there, and it was certainly a great day. I was fortunate to, or I don't know how fortunate, to be one of the judges for the costume contest, which was a difficult job, because they were all really, really good. And it's so hard judging these kids with their costumes, because they've all put so much into it and are so excited. But it was, it was really great, and we saw, you know, littlest kids, little babies dressed up, up into, you know, there were teenagers still dressed up and having a good time. So it certainly was a fantastic day. Also, a few of us were able to attend the 15th year anniversary lunch at the Senior Center, which we saw Mr. Alfred cooking lunch, which was very exciting. Great hamburgers.
Our guru.
It was a really good time, though, and what a great program we have at the Senior Center, so very well done.
Terry did a great job.
Yeah, certainly impressive. That's a great place. Also, we have, coming up, November 11th, we have the Veterans Day Parade coming up, and I just wanted to give a little shout out. We're, the Auxiliary Post is hosting a Veterans Day breakfast at Camden's that morning, November 11th, from 7:00 to 10:00, right before the parade. So put that on your calendar.
Any other comments? Great. That takes us to the Town Manager's Report.
I just wanted to just give a couple of comments. With the town beach, there certainly has been some major transitions that have been required as a result of the beach erosion. In fact, one of the things we had to do is to move back the main facility before we lost the rest of it to the ocean, as we had lost the last seating area with the last major storm. We are looking at the need to rebuild that entire facility. With the location, I couldn't agree more that it's out of the place where it used to be, where there was great coverage available. We have a number of issues that have to be addressed, whether it's providing an area for shade for those individuals that need to get out of the sun, yet want to enjoy the beach. The handicapped accessibility is also a major issue. One of the things that we're looking at is that we'll be spending money in the spring for the current fiscal year, and we'll also be budgeting additional money in 15, in the 16, 17 year. But make no mistake about it, it's going to take us probably the next five to 10 years to be able to accomplish what had been in place when that facility was initially constructed. What we're trying to do at this point is to deal with the shade issue as one of the main priorities, as well as the handicapped accessibility. The other problem that has to be addressed is how we provide coordination with the lifeguards and the people running from the pavilion itself. So there's a number of things that we will be involved with. Certainly, this past summer was not as smooth as we would have wanted it to be, but for us to be able to get the septic system in, the building relocated, and to get the handicap ramps in, required some logistics. We did have the walkover closed for a certain period of time because of construction debris that was in the area. Hopefully, by the time we get to next summer, we'll have many of those issues resolved. But at the same time, there's a great deal more money that would be necessary if we were going to provide more than just reasonable accommodation for each of the different interest groups that use that beach on a day-to-day basis during the summer months. Second item I wanted to ask is if Terry Murphy would come forward and provide the council with some good news.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening. As Rachel had mentioned, last week, there was the 15th anniversary celebration at the Senior Center from the time that they opened the doors of the new building. At that same time, we were fortunate to be the beneficiary of a generous $10,000 donation from one of our longtime participants, Indu Saranarayan. That's a tough one to pronounce. She's been a member of the center since 2003. Her late husband was also a member with her. And she addressed the participants and some special guests at our anniversary luncheon last week. She put into words how she felt about the Senior Center, and what it means to her, and what it meant to her late husband ER. I really can't do justice, as I paraphrase her eloquent message, but these were her main points. She talked about how the center allowed her and everyone who has the opportunity to attend the independence and freedom to do what they wish, whether it's participating in a planned program, simply sitting by the fireplace in the atrium, or engaging with staff and volunteers to find guidance on any number of issues, Medicare Part D, support groups, the health clinic, legal assistance, whatever it might be. She also talked about how she imagined that heaven would be much like the center, a place of freedom, independence, and constant support if needed. She spoke briefly about the death of her husband, and how grateful she was for the support of staff and friends at the center, and how they have become her extended family. And then finally, she noted, she didn't really have anything specific in mind for how the funds are to be used, except to say that they should benefit the center and its mission to provide services and programs that enrich and enhance the lives of the elderly in our community. She offered that a suggestion box might be a good idea to put in the atrium, so seniors could contribute ideas to how the funds might be spent. Staff plans to develop a list of potential programs and projects for which to use the funds, and Indu will be included with the decision-making on the final selection process. For those of you who were present last week, you could clearly see that Indu held the attention of her peers better than anyone else who spoke that day. No offense, Councilwoman Healy. It's not easy holding the attention of 140 hungry people, but she was able to, because her message resounded with those who were present and could relate to her experiences. The Senior Services Department's been fortunate to have the most professional and committed staff around, combined with the unwavering support of the leadership of South Kingston and Narragansett. A very, very special thanks to Indu for her most generous donation and extremely kind words. So, it's been a good news.
It's fantastic.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say about that. If there is anything that comes out of that, or there's a plaque, or there's a thank you posting, the biggest thing I walked away with is let there be peace. I want peace. And, you know, she said it in kind of a jokingly way, but that was like the message that so many people, I talked to Shirley Gallagher, a whole host of people there that day, and that's the one thing they took away. So if, she just wants peace, and I think that's what the Senior Center talks about. Everybody goes there to find resolve, to find peace, to enjoy. She was a remarkable woman.
Absolutely.
She was certainly an amazing speaker.
Yes.
I mean, it was...
Very natural, it was a very heartfelt message, and you could clearly see that.
She was incredible.
And, you know, everything she said is true, though. You all have done such a wonderful job, and what a great facility for them to have. Amazing that we have this in our community, so thank you for all your hard work, too. And certainly thank her for the donation.
Our staff does a great job.
Where would that many people go otherwise? I mean, it is a home for a lot of those people. That is a good portion of their time in their day.
That's very true, yeah.
It's amazing. It's unbelievable.
Well, we're very happy to have accepted the donation. We will definitely do her proud and put it to good use through programming or purchase of whatever we need for the center.
I don't think you could disappoint her. She's pretty happy with her...
We don't want to disappoint.
She was a spot-eyed woman.
She's happy.
I'm telling you, she was...
Yeah, that was great.
She was good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anything else?
That program is just, you know, a great example of shared services, because of the relationship with Narragansett, and the amount of money that they pay toward that facility on a yearly basis that allows us to be able to provide the quality programming that we're able to provide to our senior population. With that, I have no other items. I'll never try to top Terry.
Mike? Very good. No appointments tonight, so we're on to item 12B, a resolution authorizing an award of contract Energy Conservation, Inc., 68 Industrial Boulevard, for electrical energy-saving lighting improvements at the Peacel Office Building in accordance with all specifications in an amount not to exceed $27,741, including a $1,000 contingency. And as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated October 19th, 2015.
This is a continued effort on the town's part to be able to reduce energy consumption, particularly in the area of electricity. What we're looking at here is the removal of 149 lamps, and replacement of those with energy-efficient LEDs. As Terry noted in the correspondence on the matter, we'll be going from 1,400 watts to 96 watts on eight of the fixtures that illuminate the village green. We're looking at the overall cost of $26,741, will be a contingency that we'll put in. We'll also get an abatement of about another $887, based on us being a full participant with that energy program. This will go through Energy Efficiency Services, which is a sole-source contractor that works with National Grid. We're looking at probably about a four-and-a-half-year buyback. Funds that will be used to pay for the chair will be coming out of retained earnings within the Peacel Office Building Fund. Recommend the council approve as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve on page four, item 12B, as presented by Steve Alfred, for Energy Conservation, Inc.
Second it.
So moved. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item 12D is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to SmithCo Oil Company, 491 Main Street of Wakefield, for number-two fuel oil and for maintenance and service for the town and school department, for a one-year period beginning November 1st, 2015, and ending October 31st, 2015, according to the terms and conditions of the bid specifications, yada, yada, yada. Steve, can you tell us more about this?
Yes, on an annual basis, we go out for heating fuel. We are, we received two vendors that submitted proposals, SmithCo from Wakefield and Superior Plus out of Providence. When we look at bidding for oil, what we're looking at really is the transportation cost. SmithCo bid 11 cents, Superior bid in at 10.5 cents. A component of the bidding documents also is to provide the service and maintenance for each of the different facilities that are serviced by oil. The overall cost differential is that it would appear that pure dollars and cents, Superior would be lower by about $422. That assumes that the same... That assumes that the same number of hours of maintenance requirements would be used next year as used in the prior twelve-month period. Because we'd be seeing service out of Providence with, uh, with Superior, we would see an increase in the, uh, the hourly values associated with the maintenance. They were bidding in at about, uh, at a cost of a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. So we expect that that four hundred and twenty dollars would be lost, uh, during the course of the year in terms of, uh, increased costs because of the portal to portal, uh, fees that we would be paying for the maintenance. So I would, uh, re-, in my review, I believe that SmithCo is the lowest qualified bidder for the town for those services for the next twelve-month period. The other thing that the bidding documents allowed is for us to negotiate a cap price with, uh, SmithCo. At this point, uh, we have not, uh, I've looked at the prices of each of the last three days and I've, I don't see that there's enough of a margin that would justify paying an additional ten cents, uh, per gallon to be able to have an upside protection. Based on everything we're seeing, there's probably will be stabilization or even some additional decreases in heating fuel prices, uh, over the next heating season. But I do want to continue to have the opportunity through November to be able to, uh, deal with that cap price if in fact we see something traumatic in the market. So I'd ask the council to approve the resolution as presented on the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda item twelve D.
Second.
So moved, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item twelve E is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Morton Salt, Inc. of one twenty-three Whacker Drive, Chicago, for rolled salt at the unit price of sixty-three dollars and sixteen cents per ton delivered for FY twenty fifteen sixteen and sixty-five dollars and sixteen cents per ton delivered for FY twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager.
We anticipate buying about twenty-one hundred tons, uh, if we have a normal winter. As John's shown on the fourteen, fifteen year, we were up of over twenty-three, uh, hundred tons. We're expecting a price increase, uh, based on the master price agreement from Morton. Uh, it's up about a dollar over what we had anticipated when we put the budget together. But these are the best prices that we are going to be able to receive because they're buying in such volume and bringing it in, uh, to the port of Providence. I recommend the council approve the two-year contract as presented, uh, in John's memorandum.
I had a question. Um, last year you said we needed about twenty-three hundred tons, is that what you said?
Yes.
Um, and that was a little bit more than we projected. Uh, were there any shortages last year? Did we have trouble getting that or?
We have difficulties, uh, during the course of the season on a normal basis. It depends if, it, because the amount that's stockpiled in the city and sometimes whether or not the barge is late getting in, because there's so many cities and towns that are gonna be drawing from the same, same pool, there may be some delays. We've got a very good-sized, uh, salt shed, so we will stockpile that and we normally don't run into difficulties. In, uh, in a real bad time, we may be down to an empty shed, but we're usually able to, uh, to get the product in that we need.
Okay.
So, uh, if we didn't have the size shed that we had, uh, we have, I think we'd, uh, we'd have some concerns. There's also borrowing that goes on between the different towns. If we have it and somebody else needs it, we'll, uh, we'll work with them and vice versa.
Okay.
So I, I don't think it's a major problem, but, uh, the real, the real issue is having enough room in Providence for it to be there for both state use and for all the cities and towns.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Do I hear a motion?
Item twelve E.
Uh, I make a motion to approve item twelve D as presented by-
E.
Oh, E, sorry. Uh, twelve E for the bid from Morton Salt Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so moved, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't hear all the other.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. I need, uh, sorry, everybody, you're gonna have to go, but I need a motion to, uh, move us into executive session.
I make a motion that we move, we close the public open hearing and, well, and go into executive session.
I second.
Uh, you need to read this exactly.
Oh, okay. Um, a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six five A two to discuss matters pertaining to the litigation of Hengten LLC and, uh, the town of South Kingston.
I second that.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You need a roll call vote on that.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Uh, Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President Healy.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here. Aye. Here and I.
Here I, here I.
Councilwoman Glidhill.
Aye.
Councilman Veely.
Here I am.
Uh, unanimous affirmative vote to recess to closed executive session at eight oh six.
Do I have five minutes, not five minutes, one minute to go to the-